Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yanez?
Here.
Mrs. Yarco?
Present. Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported at any discussion. Ms. Saroski, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor Taylor.
Yes, would you like to remove?
Yes, please. I would like to remove from the consent agenda item I and have it placed as 10A under consideration and move all those under consideration down into B and C, please.
Okay. Any council, any other discussion? With no further discussion, we will take consent agenda item I and make that 10A. 10A will be B and 10B will be C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me first begin by reminding everyone that the Sterling Heights Police Department joins law enforcement agencies across the country in hosting these 37th Annual National Night Out, and that'll be on Wednesday, August 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Sterling Heights Police Department, obviously located across the road. All Sterling Heights residents, families are welcome to attend. We always have a great turnout at this and we're looking forward to seeing everyone. And as normal, the event will include demonstrations on public safety equipment, as well as displays from both police and fire departments. Emergency service personnel will speak to residents about established volunteer programs, such as the Citizens Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT, Neighborhood Watch, and Citizens on Patrol, known as COPS. There'll also be raffles, prizes, and refreshments at the event. So we look forward to seeing you there again. That's August 4th, two weeks from tomorrow, 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And also, I'm really proud to talk about the next item. Once every five years, each local government in the state of Michigan undergoes an audit, Minimum Assessing Requirement, or AMR, review. The audit is performed by this Tax Management Association on behalf of the Michigan Tax Commission. So the Tax Management Association reviews specific data to ensure the cities of government assessment role meets the minimum assessing requirements based on state statute, STC rules, policies, and the like. The assessing team for the city put forth a collaborative effort to compile the necessary data for this year's review that was completed just in June of this year. The team put in countless hours of analysis to ensure the proper development of land values, economic condition factors, and assessing department-written procedures, among other things. So this is sort of an accreditation process, if you will, for assessing department. And I'm really proud to announce that we just received the official results from the Michigan Department of Treasury stating that the city of Sterling Heights passed the AMR review with a perfect score, which is highly unusual. So I wanted to congratulate our assessing team for their really excellent work during this entire process. And I think it's one more example of where Sterling Heights is doing all that we can to practice best practices throughout the organization. And speaking of that, I'm also super excited to mention that the city clerk's office is now accepting passport applications by appointment only. There've been a number of inquiries about passport applications over the years, and as travel begins to open up, inquiries have increased. So we're really glad to start providing this service. The city clerk's team is trained and certified to accept passport applications for the first time ever that are sent to the U.S. Department of State for processing. As a passport acceptance facility, applications can be accepted for adult passports, renewal of adult passports that are expired more than five years, minor passports, with parents present, of course, 16- and 17-year-old passports with parental consent. U.S. citizens who need a renewal of adult passport that has expired less than five years have to submit their application by mail. But nonetheless, we can service a number of individuals. Questions regarding appointments can be directed to our website, actually, passports@sterling-highs.net. So we look forward to residents being able to have access to this great service. And I want to end on a really positive financial note. The city of Sterling Heights will be receiving grant funding to go toward the recent purchase of both body worn and in-car cameras. Captain Ken Pappas worked very hard with his team to secure the grant funding for this purchase, and his hard work certainly paid off. The city is set to receive $100,000 from the Department of Justice Body Worn Camera Grant and $30,250 from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Administration Grant. So these two grants will cover a significant share of the total costs of this new endeavor in technology. We have the body worn cameras. We'll be rolling those out soon, and certainly it'll be a value-added service and also a major safety enhancement for officers. So a job well done by Captain Pappas and his team. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda is a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights police officers. We have a presentation from our police chief, Dale Dwojakowski. Chief Dwojakowski.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Tonight, I'd like to present the two newest additions to the Sterling Heights Police Department. To my left, Jeremy Jackushevich, who is married and has one little daughter, Millie, who I just met as she walked in. Jeremy's got an associate's degree from Baker's College in criminal justice from 2015, graduated the Oakland Police Academy in 2015, and started to work at the Hazel Park Police Department as a dispatcher in 2014, and then became a police officer there in 2016. So he's been a police officer for five years. And again, Sterling Heights stole another great police officer. So we're not too proud about that, but as you know, in a world where we're seeing declining people applying, Sterling Heights is a destination police department, and people are still willing to leave after years of service to come here and serve in this city. So that speaks volumes for the way the city is managed and this police department. And to my right here, Eilish Devota. Eilish grew up in Sterling Heights. She has an associate's degree from McComb Community College in General Studies in 2020, and she just finished the McComb Police Academy. And Eilish has got another great story. Eilish is one of our former explorers, our police explorers. And as you know, I believe it's 14-years-old, Eilish, you can join. You can stay till you're 21-years-old. And it's kind of a junior police officer program. And we learned in that program, they meet every single week, and they do mock domestic violence runs, traffic stops, arrest procedures, kind of learning the basics of how to become a police officer. We invest in that program. We have officers mentor that program, and we support that program because of this. Eilish has been in that program since she was really little, and she still looks little. Eilish is 21-years-old. But this is what you get, someone that wants to be a police officer, dedicated to this craft, to this career, and that's why we have that program going. So it's just a great story, and we're so excited to have both of you on board. And with that, we'll do the actual swearing-in. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department
And I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. With that, Jeremy, I'll have you come up and say a few words.
Like Chief said, I came from Hazel Park. I worked there for five years. Really supported by my wife, my family, our all which are here today. Came here because of all the great things that people have said about the city, the department especially. It's been, you know, really something that I wanted to come to work for. So I'd like to thank everybody for having me here as well.
Hi. So first, I'd like to start today by saying thank you to the city council, the mayor, Chief Mike, or, Chief Dwojakowski, Mayor Michael Taylor, for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Sterling Heights. As the chief said, I've moved, or I lived in Sterling Heights since I was three-years-old. So I grew up here. This is, I played in Dodge Park. I went to the Utica Community Schools. This is my home, and this is my community. And when I joined the Explorer Program, I just got even more exposure to the city and the people that kept us safe. And I knew that that was when I wanted to work for Sterling Heights, and that's been my goal ever since. I've had my amazing family stand behind me. When I was about 13-years-old, I told them I wanted to be a police officer. They weren't all exactly thrilled at first, especially my mom. But as I grew up, and they knew I was serious about it, and I kept with it, they've been nothing more than supportive. And two of my best friends back there, that also helped me to reach my goals. I want to thank everyone for being here today, and the city of Sterling Heights, for letting me have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I just noticed Captain Hopper's with us tonight. So Captain Hopper has been running the Police Explorer Program for a million years, and she gets closer to retirement. She's trying to find another mentor to take over that program. So I would like to thank Captain Hopper for her selfish years of doing that program, a lot of it no money, did it on her own time, bringing cookies and donuts, and keeping these kids happy and keeping them involved in this program. So Colleen, from a personal level, I really, really thank you for the time you spent with the Explorer Program. So thank you very much. So with that, again, I thank council for you continually supporting this police department. We are still three officers down. We're trying to hire him as fast as we can. We'll see if we can get him on this list. We might have to start another list, but we are hiring. We thank you for your support, as always, and with everything we do with the training and the equipment, we do appreciate that. And I'll just invite council and having you guys invite our new employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And council, open it up. To anyone who has any comments, Ms. Saroski.
Thank you very much, Mayor Taylor. So welcome to both of you, Jeremy and Eilish. It's a great department, and I'm really happy to have two very eager and well-prepared officers. Jeremy, with your five years, yes, you have the experience and the critical thinking skills that we really need. And Eilish, those years of being an explorer also give you, as a, I'm a nurse, so I want you to have those critical thinking skills. You're coming out of the gate. Sometimes we worry about nurses who don't, who just come right out of school, but you're coming out with the experience as well. So we're very happy and excited to have you. It says, "My city, our city too." So, you know, this is home, and we're glad that you're here. So welcome.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you so much, both of you, for signing up to do a very difficult job these days. Thank you so much from our community. We're going to expect a lot out of you. This is Sterling Heights, but I'm sure you're going to rise to the challenge and do a wonderful job. Our community supports the police. We put our money behind the police because we understand that having a safe community is our number-one goal. We're going to trust you to keep it safe, and keep yourself safe, too. Thank you so much.
Counsel, anyone else?
Well, to both of you, I want to congratulate you and welcome you to the city of Sterling Heights. What we always say is that you maybe have been other places before. Hazel Park, Eilish, you've been here in the city before, and you're coming back home, so to speak. We don't think you're ever going to leave. We'll probably have you for your entire career here, and we, we're proud of that. We're proud of the fact that police officers come here to serve and they stay. And I see you've got a lot of family members here that are very proud of you. I can tell you that we represent about 135,000 people that are very proud of you, that support you, that will do whatever they can to support you. So we are their voice, and we take pride in the fact that we're not going to let our police officers down. You guys are, as Mr. Radke said, doing a very difficult job. You're protecting our families. So thank you. God bless, God speed, and if you ever need anything, we're here to help. So I'm going to say one more time, a big round of applause and congratulations to Jeremy and Eilish. Now, there's just no easy way for your family to sneak out of this auditorium. So what we'll do is we'll take, it's 7:15, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 7:20, so you guys can go out, take some pictures, get some dinner, and celebrate and enjoy tonight, okay? Five minutes, we'll stand in recess.
Okay, calling this meeting back to order. We will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is a public hearing. And this is to consider the application by Cosmo Lombardo for and on behalf of Lombardo Homes of Michigan LLC to amend the Palm Ryan Site condominium planned unit development for real property situated on the east side of Ryan Road, south of Eighteen and a Half Mile Road, PPCM-1170. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Vanderpool. As you note, Mr. Mayor, this is a first, potential first amendment to the existing PUD development that is known as Palm Ryan, located, as you note, on the east side of Ryan Road between 18 and 19. Again, the modification that's being requested is specifically for the house sizes within the development itself. That is the main portion of the amendment. There is an additional amendment that is being requested, the removal of the acceleration and deceleration along Ryan Road. If any of you have visited this site, you'll see that that's already actually been approved in that fashion, has already been constructed in that fashion, based on our engineering and final site plan approval. So this would just be cleaning up the PUD language to basically reflect what's in the ground. And then finally, the applicant, Lombardo Homes, is requesting to actually attach the proposed elevations, which I'll show you in just one moment, which were also included in the packet, as part of the PUD itself, locking them in those elevations that they're looking to develop at the site. So again, that location, we've already gone through. That's the current zoning. The previous zoning was an R-100. That is the underlying zoning district out there. There is that approved PUD development, which was originally approved about four years ago now. I want to stress that the fact that there's no modifications to the existing development layout. The roadway stays as it is. The lot layout stays the way that it is. Nothing changes in that aspect. There's no modification to the number of homes. Right now, there's 16 homes that are basically set to go out there. The developer, Mr. Lombardo, and his group are not looking to add any additional or subtract any homes from that total. And then no modifications to the approved landscape plans. There's extensive landscape throughout this development, and once the development actually starts to go into the ground, so to speak, in terms of houses. So original approval was May 2017, when it was before you on Planning Commission on that timeframe. Final site plan approval came out of that in October of 2018, so it went through administrative site plan review during that year after the original PUD approval. Roadway and utilities are installed. And if the amendment was approved, Lombardo Homes would commence or return to its site development from their standpoint immediately upon property transfers. My understanding, again, if things go well for them tonight, that may ultimately occur yet this week. This kind of shows the layout, showing the existing roadway. Allegheny Drive to the right-hand side of the screen, the fire department to the left-hand side of the screen across Ryan Road, but again, showing the existing road configuration, cul-de-sac development. There is an emergency access connection to Allegheny that will remain as part of this development as well. This kind of shows the ultimate house layout a little bit better, a little more clear in terms of the presentation of where those homes will ultimately occur. And this is also the landscape plan in conceptual form. It can show that the landscape along the roadway itself and then throughout development is pretty extensive for a single-family residential building of this nature. This gets into the elevations being proposed. So originally, the PUD called for minimum house sizes of 3,000 square feet minimum period. What Lombardo Homes is looking to do is adjust that down to 2,700, but as you'll see as we kind of go through these and is, and providing your backup, those house ranges from 2,700 square feet to 3,800 square feet. So in reality, if the market dictates, there may not even be a 2,700-square-foot home in this subdivision. They may sell out at the larger home sizes, but they want the option as part of one of their models. This happens to be one of them, the Austin, which is one of the smaller site plan, or house plans being provided as part of this potential option. The Barclay would be another. Basically, as you look through these, you'll see that the front facades, all brick. The first floor, the sides and rear, all brick as well. The Hampton, again, some of these are starting to get into the 3,000-square-foot-plus home size range, more consistent with the original approval. And again, some of these go all the way up to 3,800 square feet. The Princeton. One of the other things that Lombardo Homes offers, and I believe this is one of their standard operating procedures, but they are willing to put this in as part of their PUD amendment as well, is basically a non-monotony clause, if you want to call it that. So therefore, the homes on either side and across the street from a particular unit are not allowed to be the same model, not have the same materials and same colors as that in front of them or to the side of them, thereby reducing a more diverse home site or overall home development. So again, the building materials remain the same as originally proposed within the 2017 approval. Again, we're looking at home sizes ranging from 2,700 to just about 3,800 square feet, rather than the flat 3,000 minimum that was put into the original PUD approval. Again, that monotony clause we just talked about. Going back to the Excel Decel Lane, again, it's been installed without the Excel Decel Lane. Engineering did not require it, so obviously it didn't go in. But again, the PUD originally called for it, so that's cleaning up the language. And all the originally approved site features would remain as originally approved. And finally, Planning Commission approval was not necessary for this particular amendment due to the minor nature of it, but this was advertised as a public hearing. We did receive one comment, or one question, I guess, inquiry from one of the homeowners' associations. They just requested the information, and we did not hear anything in additional. I'm not sure if they're in the audience. Otherwise, we received no additional comments relative to the proposal. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Any presentation from the petitioner before we go to the public, or just available to answer questions from the council?
I'm available to answer questions, but I definitely missed the call.
Very good. Thank you. At this point, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Yeah. What's the price you want of these homes?
Yeah, you can come up and respond. That was pretty quick.
Cosmo Lombardo, 13001, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township. Of course, the price is always driven by the market. Of course, we know we're in a very, very good market right now. These homes, that Austin you saw with the full brick, that's actually the same lineup we're doing in Hidden Estates. They'll probably start with, before people buy options, you could probably get into that Austin with no options at all and no premiums for about 425. Realistically, we're going to transact anywhere from the mid-to-high fours to the mid-fives. And in this market, who knows, we've been seeing some crazy numbers. It could get up a little higher. And always driven by the caveat, that's always market-driven.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else on the public hearing? If not, I'll close that portion, and we'll go on to reports, or I'm sorry, we'll close that portion. Counsel, we need wishful thinking, right? Counsel, we need a wishful thinking, right? Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to approve the first amendment to Palm Ryan Site Condominium Planned Unit Development Agreement for real property situated on the east side of Ryan Road, south of Eighteen and a Half Mile Road, PPCM-1170, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Sir, did you have any comments? Sir? Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to ask the last sizes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I didn't see you. Okay. It's been moved and supported. Counsel, any discussion? Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you.
First of all, Mr. McLeod, you pretty much, you know, were very clear on what we're doing here tonight. So basically, just a comment to Mr. Lombardo, you know, I thank you for taking this project over. I drove by it last week, and it's like a moonscape right now. So I truly appreciate you taking it over, and I'm glad there are no significant changes other than the house size. It's a, they're beautiful homes, and you know your market. So if you think you can sell them at that price, then, you know, I wish you well. So I have nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco?
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Just to clarify, this is very simple. I mean, it's just saying that they want permission to build a home that's 2,700 square feet, but it's because they want it to be an option for homeowners. They might build the model, and not any of them will be at 2,700 square feet. Is that correct? I mean, the ones, the other ones that they sell.
Mr. McLeod.
That is correct. So there would be an option for anyone looking to purchase the home there. But as you know, and as I noted earlier, no one may pick that option. So everyone may pick an option that is well over 3,000 square feet. So that is.
Okay.
This is just an option for them, or the availability to offer that particular amount.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a brief question through the chair to Mr. McLeod. The deceleration lanes were eliminated because traditionally, on these types of developments, the city doesn't have deceleration lanes. I just have to ask, because I wasn't here when this was originally proposed, so I'm just curious.
Mr. McLeod.
So based on the size and configuration of Ryan, typically, when you go to that extensive of a road profile, you would not have acceleration-deceleration lanes. So not that it can't happen, but it's just not typical at that point.
Well, wonderful. I think this is going to be a wonderful project. I wish you well, Mr. Lombardo. I think you're going to be able to sell these houses, because right now, the market is very hot. So I wish you luck. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck, sir. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance adoption, and this is to consider adoption of an ordinance amending Chapters 1, 11, and 33 of the city code to define offensive odors as a public nuisance and property maintenance violation, and provide for municipal civil infraction penalties for violations. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Yeah. What does this smell mean? What are you talking about here? Is it a chemical plant, or what's it for?
So we don't do back and forth here?
Oh, you don't talk back and forth?
No question. Well, I mean, we'll deliberate on it, and counsel can answer your questions, but we're not going to answer right now. Anyone else in the audience on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to adopt the ordinance amending Chapters 1, 11, and 33 of the city code to define offensive odors as a public nuisance and property maintenance violation, and provide for municipal city infraction penalties for violations.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Sarowski?
I don't have any discussion, because we did really discuss this in the previous meeting. However, if we could, would, through the chair, could I have Mr. Koschubski explain this for the gentleman that had questions?
Mr. Koschubski.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. To, I guess, address the question of what kind of odor we're talking about, it's odors emanating across the property line that would be of such level of intensity, character, and duration, and recurrence, meaning it's got to be something so pervasive that it offends the ability of neighboring properties to enjoy their property. So it wouldn't be like a campfire or a barbecue. It would be, take a strong odor of like wet, moldy carpeting that's emanating from a house that had water damage and nothing was done for weeks to rectify it. That would cause a trigger of this ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Mr. Koschubski. That was a rhetorical question.
That was rhetorical.
No, you can't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mrs. Sarowski, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just have a brief question through the chair to Mr. Koschubski. In the last meeting, Mayor Taylor brought up the fact that he wanted to make sure that a legal action wasn't taken against someone doing something that's legal but could be an offensive odor. I was wondering, did Mr. Denalton, the attorneys, look at that and possibly change the ordinance? Or they clarify? I'm just curious about that.
Mr. Koschubski.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did look at that. We actually inquired with the mayor to kind of get a clarification on what his question was. So there are two aspects to this. There are legal activities that cause an odor, but there are also legal activities that, when done incorrectly, can cause an odor that is so offensive to the sensibilities of anybody that you wouldn't want that to continue. So we would obviously work with the homeowner to try to stop the situation before we would ticket, but this ordinance allows for a ticket in a situation where that is so pervasive it doesn't stop.
That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Just quickly, through the chair to Mr. Koschubski. So I guess some people have raised the issue of, you know, if a complaint is filed or it's found, there's found to be an offensive odor, the city's going to come and bust the doors down and, you know, charge the house and demolish things inside the house. Can you please address this for me?
Mr. Koschubski.
Thank you, Mayor. Great question. No, this doesn't give us a right to bust down the door and run into a house. The best we can do is ticket them, which is what we would do under the old ways of the smaller ticket and fines, but this is a municipal civil infraction, so you get a ticket.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? So you were saying if that happened before, you would have given, it would have been a misdemeanor? It would have been a misdemeanor, but now it's a civil infraction. Okay? So we can charge a different amount. It's not a criminal penalty, right? Okay. You and I spoke on the phone, and my concern at the last meeting was, you know, what if something happens on my property that I don't control? So can you explain how will we differentiate? How does the ordinance differentiate between things that I'm controlling versus things that I'm not controlling? Like, for example, I was concerned if a skunk comes and sprays on my property, well, now there's an offensive odor emanating from my property. Do I have to, I mean, do I just wait for it to dissipate? How does the ordinance address things like that?
Thank you, Mayor. So the answer to your question is that if it's something that's not in your control, so let's say there was gasoline leak from a container on your neighbor's property and it ended up on your property. Obviously, we're not going to cite you for that odor, because you didn't cause it. Neighbor might get a ticket, but you didn't cause it. You raised at the last meeting an issue of like a skunk, for example. That wouldn't be such a pervasive nature that it would offend the sensibilities of somebody over, for extended duration. It's not something you caused. So if you have an animal that's not under your control, like a skunk that happens to appear on the lawn and marks its territory, that would not be something that we'd be able to ticket for. It has to be something that you've affirmatively caused to occur.
Okay. Can we unlock those doors somehow? We shouldn't be locking the doors to public council meetings. All right, let me get my train of thought back. Marijuana, all right? Obviously, there are a lot of grow houses in Sterling Heights. Everybody knows that. It's not always clear whether they're operating legally or illegally, okay? But I've heard complaints from people that say, there's this smell emanating from my neighbor's house. It's clearly marijuana, and it's offensive to them. So if you, and caregivers are allowed under the state law to have a certain number of plants, and we can't do anything about it. So what happens in a situation where there's that legal activity, but, and it's something that they're under, you know, in control of, it's something that they're causing, but it creates this offensive smell that leaves their property limits? What does this ordinance do in a situation like that?
Again, thank you, Mayor. The answer to the question is kind of twofold. So on the first side, yes, you always have the ability to do legal things on your property, but it can't be done in such a manner that it impairs the rights of others on another property. So with respect to marijuana growing, which is legal in Michigan, to some extent in homes, there can be a pervasive smell. Homeowners can take a lot of actions to minimize that smell through air scrubbing, through better window ceilings, things of that nature that can minimize the smell. What you see in these types of situations is individuals that don't do anything to mitigate that smell. It's pervasive. It's long-lasting. It continues. And yes, it affects the neighboring property. You don't have a right to do that, even though it's legal to grow marijuana, just like it would be legal to grow skunk weed, for example. At some point, you have to take into consideration the effect it's having on neighboring properties. So that's what this ordinance would trigger. Obviously, we would try to work with whatever homeowner's doing that, try to get them to mitigate it before we take this step. But it is there, and it is a tool in the toolbox if they're not complying, and it is affecting the neighborhood in that way.
Okay. You know, I'm skeptical of this, and I was last time. Ultimately, though, the way I read it is that we already have, under the nuisance provisions of our city code, the ability to try to stop this. This is just a change from a criminal offense to a civil infraction and an increase in the fine that can be levied. So I'm going to vote yes on it. I think ultimately, we have the ability to do this already. It's reducing it from a crime to something that's just a civil infraction, but giving stiffer penalties. So I'll see how it goes, but I will vote yes. Anyone else, counsel? Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you. My concern isn't so, I mean, I do get complaints about odor, different types of odors in residential areas, but I think this is where it's really going to help us, is where some of these businesses that we have and some of the factories that we have, that the smell emanates, especially the plastic factories that go into neighborhoods, depending on how the wind blows. So that's how I think this is going to help us, because we keep going in there and telling them that we're getting complaints. And I think the recourse here and the structure as far as the penalties is going to help us a lot. So I'm not just worried about the residences. I'm worried about the industry as well, that their smells are emanating into our, you know, residents, homes. So nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? All right, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any item on the consent agenda with the omission of item I?
C. Now, you guys ain't going to talk to me, right? I'd like to know what is this going to be for the fire department and the police department? $167,000. It's a lot of money.
Anyone else on the consent agenda? We literally spent hours on that during the budget hearings, hours. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is from the consent agenda, item I. This is consideration item 10A, and this is to adopt a resolution designating the Marco Mike Adregna Veterans Memorial Garden. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to adopt the resolution designating the Marco Mike Adregna Veterans Memorial Garden. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes, thank you so much. I wanted to pull this off the agenda. I was hoping some of his family who still live in the state would be here, but even though they're not, I did want to get this on the record. And so I do have the resolution here. I'm going to try to read some of it, but as some of you know, Mike was a very dear friend of mine. We called him Uncle Mike. My kids called his wife Aunt Grace. We ate a lot of dinners there. They were very, very dear friends of the family. And I do talk back and forth with his daughter, who lives now in Oregon. So the city and administration was kind enough to do a very, very nice resolution, and this is to dedicate the Veterans Memorial Garden that is already there and where Mike did money, almost all of the memorials that are granite. He designed them. He created them. And so we are going to now honor, name it as the Mike Adregna Veterans Memorial Garden. So I'll read as much of this as I can get through. "The purpose of life is not to be happy. It is to be useful, to be honorable, to be compassionate, to have it make some difference that you have lived and lived well." And this famous quote by Ralph Waldo Emerson epitomizes the way Mike Adregna lived his 78 years of life. "Mike, as his many friends knew him, exemplified what service to others should mean. He served his country, his family, and his friends, and he did so with honor, compassion, genuineness, and on all points, he did make a difference. Mike's record of service is truly impressive. He was a very proud United States Marine, and this is why I have a Marine, his example, set forth to my son, who served his country during the Korean War, but his service to others did not stop upon discharge from active military service. Mike became a proud member of the Marine Corps League of Macomb County, American League Post 44, VFW Post 6250, Marine Corps Association, Korean War Veterans Association Post 256, the Chosen Few Marine, excuse me, the Chosen Few Michigan Division, First Marine Division Association, and Executive Director of the Marine Macomb Korean War Memorial. Mike worked unceasingly to ensure that those who gave the lastful measure of devotion to the cause of freedom are never to be forgotten. Mike spearheaded efforts to create memorials on the Sterling Heights, municipal grounds to honor veterans who fought and made the ultimate sacrifice so that this nation should survive. There is little question that Mike recognized the magnitude of the service that most take for granted. For this, he should be commended. Mike's presence at Sterling Heights Annual Memorial Day Ceremony has always made the event special. His ability to touch people's lives in a caring and supportive way brought an air of genuineness to the ceremony. Because he cared so much, everyone in attendance cared more. He even made, it was even made more special because Mike was doing his work so that others were remembered. Thus, it is both fitting and proper to name the newly conceived Veterans Memorial Monuments Area the Marco, which was his given name, the Marco Mike Adregna Veterans Memorial Garden in memory of his service, honor, compassion, and for truly making a difference. Now, therefore, be it resolved that from this day forward, the area encompassing the Veterans Memorial Monument shall be designated as the Marco Mike Adregna Veterans Memorial Garden with appropriate signage to recognize the man who gave so much of himself to ensure our veterans are never forgotten. This resolution was adopted at a regular meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council held today, the 20th day of July, 2021. So thank you all for helping this happen. I am looking forward to when we can actually dedicate this. I will make sure that his son and some of his family will be there. Mike will never truly be forgotten, and will never be forgotten, and I truly thank you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sarowski. Very well said. Counsel, anyone else? Just very, very briefly, because there's not much more that can be said after that, I do thank Mayor Protem Sarowski for bringing this up. I didn't know Mike well. I met him, I think, only a couple of times, but very deserving tribute to him, and I think he would be proud of the memorial garden that we have here at City Hall. I know I certainly am, and glad that it has an area of prominence in our city. So with that, counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Congratulations, Mayor. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider approval of a cost-sharing agreement between the Macomb County Department of Roads, City of Sterling Heights, and City of Warren for the reconstruction of Mound Road, Innovate Mound Project from I-696. the reconstruction of Mound Road, Innovate Mound project from I-696 to M-59. We, this is a postponement from the last city council meeting. We'll have a brief presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you very much, Mayor. As you mentioned, this was postponed at the last meeting, and city council directed city administration to negotiate during the intervening two-week period of time with the Michigan or with the Macomb County Department of Roads for the inclusion within the project's scope of a complete contiguous public sidewalk on the east side of Mound Road within the boundaries of Sterling Heights. And before I get into that, let me just by way of background, touch on some of the highlights of this mega road project. This is a $219 million road replacement of Mound Road from approximately between I-696 and M-59. Of that nine-mile stretch of roadway, six miles of it is in Sterling Heights, and it includes reconstruction of the roadway pavement, including drainage and new roadway subbase. It includes roadway capacity improvement with the addition of a fourth lane between Seventeen Mile Road and M-59. That's to address this significant congestion on Mound Road, especially during peak traffic periods, which often backs up from south of Metro Parkway to north of Seventeen Mile Road. Also includes redesigned crossover and drive approach locations, aesthetic improvements including median enhancements, new lighting, putting a lot of the electrical utilities underground, non-motorized improvements that include a pathway on the entire west side of Mound Road, and limited sidewalk gap completion on the east side of Mound Road, which is a point of discussion this evening. New state-of-the-art and pedestrian signals that include detection, actuation, and, and the like, such as just-in-time delivery, traffic signal prioritization, and so on. Innovative intelligent transportation systems that include atmospheric and pavement-conditioned sensors, monitoring systems, and connected vehicle technology, green infrastructure in the form of new energy, LED lighting in the meetings, in the medians, I should say, and a number of other improvements along the roadway. So again, at the last meeting, there was discussion, and, and I think if I could summarize, the city council was very pleased that we have, are going to have a complete network of sidewalk on the west side of Mound, which is a vast improvement. But there is concern that even though we're closing some of the gaps, when I say we, this is a county road, the county has the contract with HNTB, who is the project manager for the entire scope of this project. The partners include therefore the City of Sterling Heights, the City of Warren, with Macomb County being the lead agency. So there is concern about not having a full network of sidewalk on the east side, and thus we were directed to go back and try and negotiate more of a solid commitment to achieve a complete sidewalk on the east side. So I'm reporting back tonight with the results of our discussions. First, if I could draw your attention to the screen, this is where we're at, at the moment. So there are, there is just over 1.1 miles of gaps planned for completion on the east side. Again, the west side, we're, we're closing all gaps. The existing sidewalk in Sterling Heights on the east side equates to two miles. That's the existing sidewalk. So therefore, the gap remaining is just under three miles. That's the, the crux of the problem that we're trying to address. On the west side, there's six miles planned. There's just under two miles of gap that exists today. With this project, again, all those gaps will be closed. So how does it lay out? Let me just walk you through Mound Road from 14 Mile all the way up to M-59. So fortunately, on, on this particular section, there, there's a portion of sidewalk. You can see the kind of slivers on the south end there along Mound, but there is some gap here as well. There's no proposed sidewalk for this particular section. I should say no proposed new sidewalk beyond the sidewalk that currently exists. And I would say, you know, just estimating, a little over half of this mile stretch currently has sidewalk. If we look at the next section, excuse me, I did not show the proposed walk. So here's a proposed walk on this section, complementing the existing sidewalk. So there's a little connection right at 14 connecting to the existing that takes you up almost halfway through that distance, and then connecting the corner just south of 15 Mile Road. So there is some proposed walk from 14 to 15. And then this is the next section, 15 Mile to Metro Parkway. So again, if you see the purple line pop up here in the bottom left, that is a proposed new sidewalk that's going to go in on this section. Again, this is the east side, but you can see a significant gap would continue to remain from where the new proposed sidewalk is to Metro Parkway. So the thought with the proposed walk that's being added is to create connectivity to the corners or to create connectivity to the existing sidewalk. There are some logistical hurdles to close all the gaps on the east side, in part because a lot of the utilities in the median are going to be moved over to the right-of-way where some of the proposed sidewalk would need to go on the east side. So this is the next section from Metro Parkway to Seventeen Mile Road. Again, you can see the, the purple lines show up here. Let me just show you that again. You can see at both ends, the bookends there, proposed sidewalk being installed to, again, create con, better connectivity with those corners. But you can see there's still a significant amount of sidewalk gap that, that would remain here. The other idea with the proposed walk was to where there are significant employers and potential employees, G D L S, for example, at Seventeen and Mound, you know, if there is pedestrian movement there, they could easily get up to Seventeen Mile Cross and then have continuous walkway throughout, out the corridor if necessary. And then this is Seventeen to Eighteen Mile Road. Again, you can see a significant movement here. I'll show you again, the proposed sidewalk from just north of Seventeen connects some businesses there, and then a little bit of a gap going up. But you can see at Eighteen Mile Road, there is sidewalk on the east side just south of Eighteen Mile Road. So a little bit of a gap there in the middle that would remain. And then Eighteen to Nineteen Mile Road is the biggest challenge for the east side. This is a challenge for two reasons. First, there, it, it, there's not a good crossing at Eighteen and a Half Mile Road. As you know, there's a continuous green if you're headed northbound, turning eastbound onto Eighteen and a Half. So that means there'd have to be some sort of crossing midway between Mound and Van Dyke, and that simply has not been determined yet. That would require a significant amount of analyses and work that's something that certainly can be done, but it's just not being done as part of this scope. In addition, there is no sidewalk on Eighteen and a Half Mile right now. That is a city road, and that has just not been a priority in terms of closing gaps. As you know, it's mostly manufacturing on Eighteen and a Half. In fact, it's, it's really entirely manufacturing on that stretch of road from Mound to Van Dyke. The other challenge here is crossing the Plum Brook Drain. There is no real viable way to get across right now unless the bridge is modified with this project, which is something we'll talk about shortly. So this particular stretch poses a real challenge for sidewalk on the east side. Now, if we look at the, the final stretch, this would be from Nineteen Mile Road to M-59. The good news here is there is already a complete sidewalk on the east side of this particular area, and that is because this is mostly residential, of course. So this sidewalk has existed for some time. We've been able to close the gaps over time, and from Nineteen Mile, between Nineteen Mile Road and M-59, complete sidewalk. So therein is kind of the scope of the problem. We have a total of six miles of sidewalk on the east side, two miles currently exist. We're adding a little bit over, let me go back to the first slide to make sure we got the numbers right. We're adding about one, just over a mile, so we have three miles of gap remaining on the east side. So we've had numerous discussions with the county and HNTB over the last couple of weeks as directed by city council, and what, what we have been able to come back to you with this evening is a, a strong willingness and desire from the county and HNTB to work with the county to ensure that we get the sidewalks completed within a reasonable period of time on the east side. Now, what is a reasonable period of time? First, let's just focus on from 14 Mile to Eighteen Mile Road, because as I mentioned, Eighteen to Nineteen is a real challenge. So from 14 to 18, HNTB believes that they can design that sidewalk in, in the next few years as part of this project, so that construction of sidewalk in that particular area from 14 to 18 could be constructed on or around shortly thereafter 2024. So approximately a few years from now, it would be designed and construction would, could commence around that time. Now, it would likely be after that time. It would likely be after the initial phase of the Mound Road construction project. In addition, the county, as indicated in their letter to the city council, has indicated a willingness to work with the city to secure the necessary funding for not only the sidewalk from 14 to 18 on the, on the east side in terms of the gaps, by way of working through SEMCOG with grants they have available, through our federal partners, and, and through other potential funding sources to secure the funding that's needed to complete the work. In addition, the county has indicated a willingness to work collaboratively with the city to figure out a solution for the Plum Brook, Plum Brook Bridge long-term. So a couple of the ideas that we discussed as recent as today is having a cantilevered sidewalk over the new Plum Brook Bridge. That'll be part of the road project that could possibly done, be done at a very affordable price, but that's something that has to be reviewed further, would have to be engineered and designed, and so on. A couple of other ideas would be looking at various options for a pedestrian bridge that would go over the Plum Brook Drain. So that's kind of where we are at in our negotiations. Now, we have always wanted sidewalk on the east side. This is something that we have pushed for from the very beginning of this project, but notwithstanding the city's interest in getting it done in this initial phase of construction, there are these logistical challenges that just are not making it a reality at this time. But through continued collaboration and partnership, and the, the, the final analysis is that, that we feel it would be reasonable to expect we could have sidewalk constructed somewhere between the three- to five-year mark of this project. We'd first have to get it designed, we have to get it fully funded, and then we have to get it constructed. But to reiterate, it would not be, aside from what I just highlighted on the presentation, the remaining gaps would not be part of the initial scope. So with us this evening is John Paul Rea, Deputy County Executive, who would like to address the city council and, and elaborate a little further on some fine points I might have missed, and then if city council has more questions on, on some of the issues remaining, we also have with us our city engineer, Brent Bayshaw, and also Steve Griffith with HNTB, and they're all available to address any detailed questions you may have. So Mayor, if you don't mind, at this point, I'd like to call on Mr. Rea.
Mr. Rea.
Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. On behalf of Macomb County, we want to continue to thank the City of Sterling Heights for your continued partnership with regards to Innovate Mound. This is a $217 million initiative that is going to take a roadway that undoubtedly has created a series of hurdles and problems for residents, businesses, and individuals that are doing transformational work across the city of Sterling Heights and within our county. Undoubtedly, throughout this process, we have facilitated numerous insights and priorities, not only from our municipal partners, but from the business community, and from all the regulatory elements that we have to juggle from the Department of Transportation. The conversations that we've had with Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Bayshaw, we will continue to commit the county's resources, insight, and expertise in order to explore any and all options to integrate sidewalk, sidewalk connectivity on the east side of Mound Road. As Mr. Vanderpool highlighted, with regards to the commitments that we have on not only the design-build components and a number of elements that we need to begin not only analyzing engineering and construction as quickly within the next week, it's absolutely critical that we reach some form of consensus, not only on a collective path forward, but how we can provide any assurances to the city moving forward. We understand that pedestrian connectivity, complete streets, and safety is a priority for the City of Sterling Heights. As Mr. Vanderpool has highlighted, and as we have discussed candidly, not only with representatives from the city, but also from representatives from our, our own Department of Roads and with our owner's rep, HNTB, the east side provides a number of challenges and safety concerns that need additional consideration, analysis, and also design elements in on those things. With the help and the expertise and the tremendous amount of analysis that has already been facilitated by HNTB, we are ready to stand by to provide those design guidelines, insights, and particulars that can help the city make the most informed decision to provide the most impactful infrastructure asset to help the city continue to grow and thrive. Myself and my colleague, Mr. Griffith from HNTB, are here to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, that you and the council may have, and we look forward to productive discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rea. Always a lot said when, when you come out and, and talk, and I appreciate, you know, that you're, you're always very on top of it, you're always very informed, and you're, you know, the residents of Macomb County are well-served that Mr. Heckel selected you. So thank you, Mr. Rea.
Appreciate that, sir.
All right. At this time, I'm going to ask, we're going to go out to the audience and see if anybody from the audience has any comments or questions, and then when we deliberate, I'm sure we'll have you back up. So I'll open it up to anyone in the audience who has anything to say. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hoffman. I live at 8261 Denwood Drive, Sterling Heights. The issue of not putting in the sidewalks, why are they not going to go in? Why are they not feasible? And how do they become feasible? Under the Americans with Disabilities Act, anything that's new that gets put in is supposed to have sidewalk put in, that's not there previously. How are they negating that?
Thank you for your question, ma'am. Anyone else under this item? Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'm Paul Smith. I live on Utica Road, which coincidentally is 1.8 miles of highway without a stoplight or a traffic signal or sidewalks on either side, which is also a crying need to have complete streets and safe sidewalks. I guess from what I hear of this, when this package was sold in 2016, complete seats, sidewalks on both sides were part of the deal. This is sort of like when you order a, a new luxury car that's supposed to have AM/FM stereo cassette, and it shows up with only an AM radio and says we have a hard time meeting costs, so we just decided to cheapen it up on you. meeting costs, so we just decided to cheapen it up on you. City council, they talk about complete streets, sidewalk gaps, green, global warming, non-vehicle transportation. That's all really big talk until real money comes into play, and it turns out into all talk. Well, right now is the only time we're ever going to have any bargaining power here. Mound Road is the biggest and the best, and the most modern and complete road in Sterling Heights. There's countless other roads that need to work, but somehow, somebody has decided to dump 2.219 million into enhancing a road that doesn't even need to be enhanced, and they can't even put in a sidewalk. This is incredible to have city and county engineers say they don't know how to make a sidewalk, or we don't know how to make a pedestrian bridge. We sure as heck put in a lot of pedestrian bridges when they're Mr. Vanderpool's idea. Mr. Vanderpool can put in a million dollar bridge in the park, put in pedestrian bridges all over the place when it's his idea, but somehow, it's an impossible engineering challenge. This is the time. We're casually spending $52 million. It wasn't that long ago that our city budget was 98 million, and they talked for meetings about picking apart the 98 million. Well, here's 52 million. Well, why don't you just save 53 million and put in the sidewalk? We see here, the only person that's really benefiting from this at all is Dan's Excavating. They're getting the profit on $200 million. At this point, we just say no. No sidewalk, no deal. And let Dan's Excavating contribute the sidewalk. I can't believe this. As a GMI student before the age of 20, before I'd even finished school, I designed and built bigger things than this. We've got a city and a county that says they don't know how to put in a sidewalk? This is astounding. This is really just like that condo deal you approved on a bigger scale. To put in a luxury condo and have it downsized, oh, okay, we'll change the deal. Well, this is the time. With this much bargaining power, if we can't get it now, we never will. So let's stay the course, get the sidewalk, 52 million. 52 million out of 219, we should have some bargaining power. We're 25% of the deal. That's one heck of a copay on a deal that we don't really need or want at all. So get the sidewalk, or don't do it at all. You know, you've got that landscaping it down the center, let's put the sidewalk in now and landscape it later. There's other things. If we have to wait, wait for something else. Put the sidewalk in, and this is the cheapest and the best time to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else under this agenda item? Yes, sir.
I'm Mr. Roden. Are you planning on digging the whole thing up? You're going to dig it up? Are you going to put new storm drains and all that in? Do me a favor. We're hurting for electricity. Cut down on the lights. We don't need all them lights. Like Van Dyke, it's lit up like a Christmas tree. We don't need all them. You got headlights, one day all, you know? There ain't nobody really out there, except industrial. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else on this agenda item?
Dave Popke, 4685 Nathan, Sterling Heights. I believe my question really, I just am curious, the criteria for, like, one side of the road gets the full sidewalk and the other side doesn't, is it because some of it's industrial, or some other reasons? Is it, is the ground, maybe the water table's different, or whatever? Why, in the first place, would one side get the full length and the other side not? I don't know who I'm asking that. Engineer?
Okay, we'll get to your question once we're deliberating, okay, sir? Anyone else on this agenda item? If not, help me out, council. We have a motion on the floor already. Motion that was voted on at the last meeting was to postpone. So it was moved and supported. I don't recall off the top of my head who made the motion and who supported it. Mrs. Zarco?
I think it was pulled off the agenda, and I made the motion so that we could discuss it.
Okay, Mrs. Zarco, do you want to kick us off?
I certainly will. I'm going to read it as presented with the possibility of an adjustment.
Okay, we don't need, we don't need a motion.
What do we?
Motion is on the floor. Motion to approve the contract is on the floor. It's been moved and supported, so we can move right into
Right into discussion.
Discussion unless
We postponed it, yeah.
There's another motion to consider. I'm going to amend your motion.
Well, can I amend the motion that's on the floor?
You may amend the motion on the floor.
Okay, I'd like to amend section two. And authorize the city manager to sign all future project documents on behalf of the city in furtherance of this approval, consistent with the scope outlined in the cost-sharing agreement.
Support.
Okay. I don't, I'm not clear on what the motion is, Ms. Zarco.
Um.
Change to section two.
You're changing section two
I'm changing, I'm changing section
By adding language to the end of, so it did say authorize the city manager to sign all future project documents on behalf of the city, and do you mind repeating the language that you added to it?
In furtherance of this approval, consistent with the scope outlined in the cost-sharing agreement.
Okay. It's been moved and supported, the amendment's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
This is, well, I'll let Mrs. Zarco, if she has any.
Well, because I made the motion, and then I was asked to make the amendment to the motion. But I'm going to let Mr. Yanis speak first, and then I'll get my thoughts together.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this adjustment to the resolution specifically because I was concerned about giving, no offense to Mr. Vanderpool, but I was concerned about giving the autonomous power of signing documents to one individual without having to come back to city council. I understand that this is common practice, but this is a 200-plus million dollar project that could have some significant changes, and I wanted to make sure that if there were any significant changes, that they came back to city council for approval or rejection before any documents were signed. So I asked that this language be added to keep this within the scope of the cost-sharing agreement, in case there's any significant changes to the, to the project outside the scope of the work.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm not sure how to interpret this. If there's a change within the scope, and it's not a change, if it's in the four corners of the document, it's not a change in the document.
No, so
It's in the contract.
I'm sorry.
If it's, if it's, if it's outside of the scope, I mean, isn't a change by definition something outside the scope? So what are we, what are you asking for exactly?
No, so, so in construction, it's very common that changes are made for a number of reasons. You could, you could run into an issue with the land, you know? You could run into a water issue, you find out that you need to put in more piping or whatever. There are things that will come up in construction that you need to do to maintain the scope of the project, well, things you need to do to maintain the scope of the project, right? So the goal is to build this, this highway, mound road, and put in all this new drainage, the new lights, the new everything, but you don't know, once you start building it, what you're going to run into. So it's quite common to have extras on a construction job, quite common to have extras and changes on a construction job for problems you run into. The concern was, and I frankly had two concerns. The concern was, one, that there was going to be something extremely significant that would affect this job, whether it's something that, whether it's something that would stop the project from moving forward as it is, or it's something that somebody decides we want to add this on, you know, whatever, and it wasn't within the scope of the work. I just didn't want to have one individual have the power to sign off on that. And frankly, I wouldn't want to put any individual in that position to do that. That's number one. Number two is, this is a long-term project, and I know three years doesn't seem to be that long, but I don't know who's going to be here in three years. I don't know if this council's going to be here in three years. I don't know if Mr. Vanderpool's going to be here in three years. And I want to make sure whoever is in charge of signing these documents, they have to make sure that they come back to city council if there's any significant changes. So this is really just tightening up the language to do what they do on a normal basis. Mr. Vanderpool will still have full autonomy to sign documents, to keep the project moving within the scope of the work, but if there's something extremely significant, it needs to come back to council. If you're going to ask me what extremely significant means, well, that's within, that's why the wording says within the scope of the cost-sharing agreement.
Okay. Council, any other discussion on the motion to amend?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
I guess what's extremely different to me may be different than what you think is extremely different. So I just think it's kind of not specific enough, or, you know, Mr. Yanis, I understand what you're trying to do, but something that may be significant to me may not be significant to you. And you're dealing with seven different scopes of significance. So what, there, I think there needs to be a defined threshold of what significance is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Yanis.
Yeah. So that's why the words within, outlined within the caution agreement exist. And if I could punt to Mr. Kachubski, could you address, because I asked Mr. Kachubski to write this.
Okay.
Well, I am not an attorney. I don't even play one on TV.
Mr. Kachubski?
Thank you, Mayor. To address the questions, a couple of things. One, most of these contracts, in particular the cost-sharing agreement, already has contemplated in it several other miniature agreements, smaller agreements to go along with the design and build of the contract, of the project. So those are the things within the scope that Mark would be dealing with, and the city manager would be dealing with. The, I think what Henry's trying to do here is say, if you're going to fall outside of the scope of the agreement, if there's going to be a major change in the scope as presented to council, and you, in your package, you see what that scope is and how it's been presented, then that's something that Mark wouldn't have autonomy to simply sign off on, and that would be something we'd want to bring back. If there was a cost overrun, for example, there are estimated costs within this agreement, if it gets outside of a level of tolerance, that would be something that we'd have to bring back to council and say, we're looking to commit more monies to this roadway. It's not just simply to further the project. So the original language, as was presented in the original motion, gave Mark that autonomy to sign all contracts in furtherance of the, of the project itself. This puts a little bit more limitation on it to keep it within the confines of what was contemplated within that agreement. So it may not be perfect, but it was something that we thought would give a little bit more of a definition.
Does this have any impact on what the county and the city of Warren have already signed? I mean, does it, does it matter if we amend this in this way?
The approval that, the motion approval? No, it wouldn't. It's just the approval of what powers Mark has with respect to execution.
Okay. Council, anyone else on the motion to amend?
No.
All right. If we vote on this, then we go back to the main motion, which is to approve. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to amend, the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the underlying motion, which is to approve this agreement. Well, I'll entertain discussion on this, and we'll start again with you, Mrs. Zarco. Anything on this?
Okay. First of all, I'm of the mindset that I want to concentrate on what we can do instead of what we can't do. And I say that because I would like a sidewalk on both sides of the street, for starters. I don't want to hold this project up. I guess I want to promise, a big written promise from the county, that in the future, this will be addressed, there'll be cost-sharing to do this, we'll look from funds outside both the county and the city in order to make this happen, and I want it in writing. That's probably the best way I can put this, because verbiage means nothing. So that's what I'm looking for, is something in writing. Now, we, you know, in the last couple of weeks, I've heard comments about, oh, Mound Road was just fixed. Whoa, it's got to be within the last five years. That was an emergency fix because it couldn't withstand the traffic anymore. So we knew this was coming, we agreed that we were going to be a partner in making this happen. So like I said, I want to start on it. I mean, this is something that we've agreed to as well, but I just want something in writing to say that the sidewalk on the east side of the street is going to be addressed. I want, what is going, what the cost of it would be now, whether we own any other right of ways for this sidewalk already. So those are things that I would want to, I would want to, you know, address. And I think Mrs. Hoffman brought up a good idea, or, you know, about ADA compliant, if that's what it is, if it's new construction and we're not putting it in, then that's something else that we have to address. So, so what can we do and what should we do tonight so that we can get this project started? I guess would be my question. And nothing further right now, but I might be back.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zarco. Anyone else, council, on the motion? Mr. Yanis?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Rea, come to the podium, please. You should have sat in the front row. I think you're going to be up a lot.
Get the steps in.
There you go. So you made the comment, and I'm maybe paraphrasing a little bit here, you're willing to commit the county resource and expertise for the completion of the sidewalks. I didn't, I didn't hear any dollar signs attached to that. Is the county willing to make a financial commitment tonight to complete those sidewalks, even as a cost-sharing with the city of Sterling Heights?
Councilmember Yanis, I cannot make that commitment tonight because there are unknown variables that we are working to compile with the owner's reps, sir. The cost of the sidewalk will grow exponentially as we work with the utilities to relocate that during the design-build process, and there's issues with regards to the right-of-way that have not been calculated that would very much add to the cost. As was also discussed by Mr. Vanderpool, sir, there are design considerations that still have to be analyzed with regards to the Plum Book Drain. I cannot give you a dollar amount, sir, and I cannot give you any certainty where the funding would come from, except for the fact that we have been successful in many other projects and initiatives of, with pedestrian connectivity, where we've bought in grants from outside agencies and developed municipal cost-share agreements, sir.
So just to be clear, you're saying maybe?
Just to be clear, we are going to use every single course of action that we've been successful with at our Department of Roads to assist a municipal priority, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
Mr. Rea, don't go anywhere. Yeah, you just should probably stay there. So to do the follow-up on this, so what happened? Why did you initially tell us that you had this, we were going to have sidewalks on the east side of the street?
Great question.
And we don't have them? What happened?
What I will tell you, and has been itemized in the memo that was provided, pedestrian connectivity has always been a priority throughout this project and initial scoping. As we continue to do the preliminary design-build with our owner's rep, and also facilitate dozens of public information sessions, we had to concede a number of design elements, not only with the roadway, but also with regards to pedestrian connectivity. We highlighted the whole notion on the east side to focus on priority gaps or high priority areas where we saw that there was strip generation. And in order to fit in the cost confines of the $217 million, and the current $40 million in funding gap that we are faced with, those are elements that unfortunately weren't put into the design-build. We are currently working on upwards of $22 million of additional federal funds that will be coming in to offset that funding gap, and continue to examine all pedestrian options that will be integrated into the corridor, not only throughout the initial phase one with the full connectivity and pedestrian asset in a new trail connection that will go the entire contiguous length of the corridor in the city of Sterling Heights, and integrate all of the pedestrian safety elements that will ensure the highest regard for pedestrian safety. This is something that we did not take lightly, this is something that we understand does not fall in direct line with the priorities that council has itemized. These are difficult decisions in the face of financial realities. Our objective is to implement the most impactful infrastructure asset we can at the most effective cost to all partners involved.
Okay, so to make that, put that in English for my residents.
There you go.
Because I understand your speak, but I also, they need to understand your speak. So you had to obtain the right-of-way.
Correct.
That we did not own, that the city did not own and the county did not own. And you also had to, so the property, you had to buy it to get it. You also had to obtain the rights to relocate the electricity and the water, and that was expensive.
We are still in the process of negotiating. Excuse me, I'm sorry about interrupting you. We're still in the process of negotiating that with utilities.
Okay. And we did not budget for that, so that was not part of the budget. We didn't expect that, and it got too expensive, outside of the scope of the project that we are expecting to pay for. Outside of the, it got too expensive to pay for, so it wasn't part of the budget.
It could not be integrated into the cost of the project. Correct.
Okay. And you're still trying to figure out ways to possibly work that in?
We have made that commitment not only to the city manager, but also to the city engineer, that we will use the efforts that have been put forth by HNTB, the engineer of the project, to figure out the cost of the connectivity on the east side. Correct.
As you're trying to figure that out, what does the timeframe look like truly in your estimation? What are you guys looking at to get that? Sorry, that's a little annoying to me even. So what does it look like to, for timeframe and ultimate cost to get that accomplished?
Mayor Protim, I'm going to speak to this. Steve, I don't want to misspeak on this. So as we've discussed with regards to the scoping of the design-build component of this, we cannot integrate this sidewalk project or these sidewalk priorities into the existing project because it will add additional overages, not only with regards to amending the existing design elements that have been put in place, and it'll also lead to additional costs and extending the compliance and all of the regulatory elements we have to submit to the DOT. And Steve, I'll defer to you if there's anything I missed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vanderpool for letting us speak here today. One of the key components right now is that the contract with Dan's excavating has already been executed. And that contract currently, as it has been developed, does not include the sidewalk on the east side of Mound Road. So in order for us to incorporate that into this project that's currently constructed or developed, it would result in significant change in both scope of work, the design builder, as well as schedule impacts that would result in delay cost and claims, overages as well. That's one reason to look to not incorporate the sidewalk directly into this project now. The additional, to add to what Mr. Raya had added, for the timeframe for completing the design of the new sidewalk on the east side of Mound Road, one of the key components that is, that led to us making the decision not to include the sidewalk on the east side of Mound was the need to relocate utilities from the median to the outside roadway and providing a green belt for those utilities to relocate. With the utilities relocating currently, we anticipate those utility relocations to be completed sometime in 2023. At that point in time, we'll have a known green space where we can fit the sidewalk and design it accordingly.
So 2023 is what we're looking at? Two years? How much is the overage that would cost financially to do that, to get everything done?
Without having the ability to look and review what the current utilities are, I wouldn't feel comfortable commenting on that cost.
Mr. Vanderpool might have an answer for that.
Mr. Vanderpool? Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Hold on, don't move, please.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Well, first, let me just clarify and put this in very plain English. What we talked about today on the phone, rather extensively, was having the design completed in 2024, so a few years, and starting construction thereafter with a reasonable timeframe of having the sidewalk completed within five years. That's what we talked about today on the phone. Now, I don't know if Mr. Griffith or Mr. Raya would now disagree with that, but that was the conceptual parameters we talked about. With respect to cost, our city engineer who's here this evening has taken a look at this, and we can make some very educated guesses on where the utilities will end up being, and I think some reasonable accommodations, and with the engineering expertise of HNTB, some professional judgments could be made. We think the estimate to install a sidewalk would be somewhere in the $500,000 range from 14 up to 18. Now, going from 18 to 19 is, you know, going to add easily $300,000, $400,000. Now, that's our city engineer's estimate. You know, it could be plus or minus 20%. Now, I think HNTB could come up with a reasonable estimate to validate that in pretty short order. It's true, the design work has not been done, so technically it would only be an estimate at this point.
And that's the cost of just the cement, or is that what the utilities and the rights?
No, that would just be constructing the sidewalk. The utilities are already going to have to be moved.
But I'm talking about the rights to?
Oh, the easement agreements.
Yeah.
The, that does not include the easement agreements, but, you know, we've been successful in negotiating easement agreements in the past with the county and other property owners in the past on 18 Mile, for example, and that worked out very favorably for us. So, you know, it's not going to add, not likely going to add hundreds of thousands of dollars, so, but, you know, again, that's a difficult call to make this evening, for sure.
So just throwing it out there, since one of our esteemed residents did mention this, how much is the beautiful landscaping costing us in this project?
I believe the estimate currently is around $2.5 million.
Not making the car the case very well. Okay. Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Raya. Mr. Raya, so we are, this is a shared project between the county, the city of Warren, and the city of Sterling Heights. So let's talk about Warren just a little bit. How much of a sidewalk gap does Warren have, and how much are we completing of the Warren
In the memo that we provided to the city, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong on this, with the high priority gaps, you're going to complete in the city of Sterling Heights 1.1 miles, and then in the city of, so there were over 5,730 feet of proposed sidewalk on the east side that was going to be extended, 4,280 feet of that are in the city of Sterling Heights. So what?
That's our camera, guys, talking to production. Oh, sorry about that. This is a makeshift operation we have in here, and it's our last council meeting. We've been in here for over a year.
Ready to get out.
And Mr. Smith's been banging down the doors to get in. We're ready to get back into our regular chambers, so just bear with us, it's our last meeting.
No worries, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best to be on my feet here. Again, so of the 5,730 feet, 4,280 of that is being extended in the city of Sterling Heights. So then the remainder of that would be in the city of Warren. And I sincerely apologize, I was a political science major, so I can't do that math on my feet, but if you need the number?
So my question is, are we finishing all of their sidewalk gaps in Warren? That's my question.
I'm going to have to defer to my colleague on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Currently, the city of Warren has one sidewalk gap, and that is being completed.
And their sidewalk gap is how long?
1,000 feet, approximately.
And so they will have sidewalks on both sides complete?
We currently have sidewalks on both sides with the exception of a 1,000-foot gap that is being completed at the intersection of 12 Mile and Mound.
I'm not, I'm not an engineer. However, to tell me that a sidewalk hasn't been designed yet, how much different can a sidewalk be than a sidewalk? I mean, it just, as a common person, not a professional in the building industry, you know, to say, we haven't designed the sidewalk, okay? Well, the sidewalk is, it's pretty standard, a sidewalk is pretty standard. And my thought is, you know, why are we doing construction in the same area twice, a year apart? If we're relocating utilities in 2023, you have that section torn up, why aren't we just completing it then? It doesn't make sense to me that you're going to inconvenience traffic and everything else on Mound to put these sidewalks in when you're already moving utilities and will have that torn up. So to do it another year later, and the 2.5 million for landscaping, is that the Sterling Heights portion, Mr. Vanderpool?
I believe that's the entire portion.
That is the entire project.
Can you tell me how much the Sterling Heights portion is?
Well, it's a, we're two-thirds of the project, so two-thirds of that.
So I think maybe, you know, if we're looking at, what, 500,000 plus the right-of-ways, right?
A million bucks.
For 14 to 18. So 800,000 with the right-of-ways from 14 to 18, and then another?
Three to 400,000, he said.
400,000 plus right-of-ways, so we'll do 1.6 to totally complete it with right-of-ways. So I think maybe we cut down a little on that landscape, and maybe we get this done a little faster. I don't appreciate, I mean, I can appreciate that Warren had less gaps than us, but they're going to be totally done, and we still have three miles of gaps remaining. And as far as, you know, well, what do we do at 18 and 1/2 mile intersection? Well, once again, I'm not in, I'm not in the industry, but as a common resident with some common sense, you put a pedestrian bridge over 18 and 1/2 mile road. That's the only way you're going to get traffic to, or pedestrian traffic across that intersection safely. It's the only way you can do it. So there really shouldn't have to be a whole lot of thought process done in the design of sidewalks and a common-sense pedestrian bridge to get people across 18 and 1/2 mile road, which otherwise they won't be able to cross. Have we also thought about crossing residence between the mile roads? You know, I was driving down Grashit, and Grashit has these areas for pedestrians to cross that are lights that actually are between the mile roads, that a pedestrian can push a button and traffic will stop. I know Mound is a very busy, busy road. However, we were considering putting bike paths on Mound because that's what we were considering. So are we considering something like a pedestrian walk across midway between the mile roads? Is that being considered at all, Mr. Griffith? Maybe you can answer that? I'm sorry?
At this point, we looked at it, and we had not considered it based on the existence of all locations. In addition to that, there's safety concerns with current vehicle expectations at 50 miles an hour and crossing a roadway for pedestrian push-button.
I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I think we need to find a solution to this sooner rather than later, and I think, you know, part of it is what we've budgeted for landscaping in this project, and a lot of it is common sense. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, Mr. Radke.
I have to further my colleagues, all of them. They've all made tremendous points tonight, and I have to second that. I'm not an engineer. I studied political science, too. But sidewalk is sidewalk. The city builds quite a bit of it every year, over a million dollars every year. We know how much a sidewalk costs, we know how to do it. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel here. The idea that this has not been thought of, every single forum I attended, we talked about putting sidewalk on both sides of Mound Road. And to have the county come in here and say, that's not what we were talking about, the design specs, everything, the pictures that were presented to the citizens of Sterling Heights and to Congress all have sidewalk on both sides. It's like we're reimagining. We woke up, and it's all been a dream. And I find it very frustrating. And then, through the chair to Mr. Raya, I hear a colleague saying that we've already executed a contract with Dan's excavating. You executed a contract, I didn't, and I don't understand how you could execute a contract when the city of Sterling Heights had not signed off on it. So how did that come to be, Mr. Raya? That's an actual question.
Mr. Raya? Yeah, come on up.
Just to be clear, Councilman Radke, we have followed every single element with regards to compliance oversight and have followed not only the strict guidance of the MDOT Advanced Contracting Team, but have done so under the complete regulation of the DOT on every single contract that has been executed, sir. We hold that in the highest regard, and in no way, shape, or form are stepping out of line on that. The contract was awarded based on a price that was bid out through the advanced contracting element, and Dan's excavating is the contractor of record for the project, sir.
But how could you sign, I'm being very strict, how could you sign that contract without us allocating our money? It sounds to me you're on the hook for the contract. I don't see that we are. You signed a contract before, and then you come to us and say, well, the contract's already signed before we even submit our money, can't change it. That seems to be kind of like, it's like, it's a setup. We signed the contract even though we had not signed off on our end, and then you say, well, we can't change it because we already signed the contract. So I think that that's crazy, because without money, I know the city of Sterling Heights, Mr. Vanderpool will never sign a contract. We have to be able to pay for what we sign, it's not just a promise. So I agree with Mr. Yanis. I think you need to have, and Mrs. Zarco, you have to have a, I want to see a signed agreement saying you'll commit to 50% of the sidewalk project and a timeline, because otherwise, I think that it's silly that we're going to spend $2.5 million on landscaping, millions of dollars on connectivity for a roadway. We're building a roadway just for cars, not for people. There's no, there's no people involved in this whole process right now. The idea, I read the letter you guys sent us, and I urge people at home to go and read it. You say, well, we don't need sidewalk on the east side of Mound because when we monitored Mound, where there is no sidewalk, there was no pedestrians using it. That's like me saying, I monitored a park without a baseball field, I only saw a couple of kids hitting, throwing balls with their gloves. If you don't build it, then they're not going to use it. So the idea that you're going to send us a letter that says, well, there's only five people who used it between a certain time period, well, yeah, maybe there's a couple of kids in Dodge Park throwing a baseball right now, but if we build a baseball diamond, I guarantee there'll be a few more kids playing baseball right there. If you build it, they'll come. It's the silliest thing. So the cost of the sidewalk, conservatively, it's 1.6 million. I want to see a money guarantee from the county, you know, I want to think about people. You know, everything you're saying is about how this benefits cars, this benefits business. And Mound Road is a tremendous roadway. I think the number is $5 billion in traffic rolls down Mound Road every year. It's valuable for our city, but to who? My residents live here, the county doesn't. And I'll be honest, I'll say, let the county seed the project to us, we'll build it. I bet you we'll do it better and cheaper and faster, because I've been unimpressed with all this confusion. We build sidewalk here every year, we build, we get rights away every year. And the idea that somehow the county is befuddled by how this process works, it just blows my mind. So I'll have more to say on this, but I'll cede the chair.
All right. Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Raya, I agree with my colleagues. We need something in writing, we need a timeframe, we need to know that that sidewalk on the east side gets put in. And I agree with Mr. Radke. The reason that you have only four or five people in your study walking there is because people normally don't walk on property unless there is a sidewalk. It's called trespassing. And if there's no easement, the people still own the property. So naturally, you're not going to have people walking on the east side if there's no place to walk. So I agree with what's been said tonight. We need something in writing, we need to know that that sidewalk goes in, because the people of Sterling Heights need that sidewalk, they will use it. So what's the timeframe that we're looking at? Do we have to withhold our signature? Do we have to postpone this until you can get this put in writing? Do you know how long it would take you to put together something for us to consider?
Councilwoman Koski, I would have to confer with our experts in the Department of Roads and our owner's rep with regards to the time length it would take to get the itemized cost for the gaps that are existing on the east side of the roadway. I do not have a number for you this evening. I do not have a number for you this evening.
Well, I would suggest that that's something that you would want to do as quickly as possible and get back with us when you have it done, and then we can continue this. And up until that point, I would suggest to my colleagues that we postpone this until that time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Koski. One preliminary thing, because it's been brought up in the past, and it's a good question, and it needs to be explained, because people think that mound road has been under construction perpetually, year after year after year, and it has. Because what we have is, what we're doing right now is spending $219, $217 million to fix mound road, okay? And two-thirds of that is the Sterling Heights portion. So, you know, spending $150 million to fix mound road is not something that you can just do lightly. In fact, half of the money, almost half of the money from this project came from the feds, which was a tremendous undertaking, a great partnership with the county and the city of Warren to get that done. But what we would have is we'd have funding from the county, the state, the city, whatever, to do these minor repairs every year. And so what you'd end up doing is, we'd fix between 18 mile and 19 mile. It would be very disruptive to traffic, and we'd be doing sectional repair work. So you're, it's just as disruptive to the motorists, and it's just repairing a few brief sections. So what we did a few years ago is, when mound road was almost impassable, and I'm not kidding you, it was almost impassable. Mark Hackel and I had a press conference on mound road, and I remember, it was a cold day. We were mad. We were ticked off that the state was continuing to not do what it was supposed to do in terms of getting us the road funding. And we had it on mound road because it was a joke. I mean, there was this, it was a statewide joke how bad mound road was. And so knowing that we were hopeful that we were going to get this federal funding and have this project come online in a few years, we were able to work with the county to accelerate the funding that we were going to get from the federal government to, instead of doing a bunch of sectional repairs, we said, "Why don't we, knowing we're going to get that money next year, why don't we take the money we're getting this year, the money we're going to get next year, we'll front it." The county worked with us to do the same thing. And then instead of doing these concrete sectional repairs, let's just mill it about two or three inches and do a complete asphalt overlay. It'll be disruptive, yes, but there's going to be disruption anyways, and this asphalt overlay is going to ride great. But the catch is, it's only going to last a few years. It's not going to last long term. It's not a reconstruct. So we did that, and it's turned out great. Mound road is beautiful right now. It's smooth. It's easy to ride on, but that ain't going to last. It's going to crumble in a matter of a couple of years. And that's how it was designed, because we didn't have enough money to do the complete reconstruct. We did have the money to do the sectional repair, but that's how it worked out, okay? So the way it is now is good, but it's not going to last. Mrs. Zarco explained that probably better than I did with about a tenth of the amount of words.
I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Funding. I've heard from some of my colleagues about funding, okay? Take from this, take from that. But I think what I'm hearing is that the funding isn't the issue. Can one or both of you confirm that? Like, if we wrote you a check for $2 million right now and said, "Do the sidewalks," would you be able to?
We would need to procure the right-of-way necessary to complete the sidewalk construction.
Okay. If I said tomorrow, "I've got the right-of-way. I've got the sidewalks." I mean, what I thought, what I thought I was hearing was that we can't even do that because it would unravel the whole project. So help me out. If we get the funding, because that's what I think we're really struggling with, is like, this is a three-year project. And to Mrs. Schmidt's point, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's that hard to, we know where the sidewalk is generally going to be, right? We can start, if we started working on procuring those rights of ways, and we figured out a way to get the funding mechanism, are you still saying, "Well, it can't be done?" Because when I discussed this with you, Mr. Rhea, I thought the conversation was, it would unravel everything. We'd have to go back and redesign, and if you redesign, then it changes the design-build. And if it changes the design-build, it changes the contract with Dan's Excavating. And if it changes the contract with Dan's Excavating, it impacts the federal money. And if it impacts the federal money, it impacts the timeline. And, you know, it's just like, it unravels to the point where it can't be done. Is that true, or is that not true?
Well, that is correct. Based on the timeline necessary to procure the right-of-way and provide that to Dan's Excavating to complete the construction of the sidewalk, in addition to the hydraulic impacts at the Pumbo Creek Crossing, and the redesign work necessary there. I'm not saying it's impossible. Nothing's impossible. But it would greatly jeopardize the ability to complete the project and the timeline required by the Infra Grant, and could jeopardize the $98.7 million of federal funding.
Okay. Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, I just wanted to interject. We talked about this extensively today. It's the opinion of our city attorney, our city engineer, excuse me, and myself, and myself, that, and I think even the county and HNTB agreed with this conceptually. This problem can be solved and not delay the project by doing the sidewalk separately outside the scope of the Infra Grant. In other words, as many of you mentioned, we install sidewalk all the time. We're good at it. We have a lot of contractors that do it. We can design, I should say, HNTB can design the sidewalk as they've already committed to tonight, and the sidewalk can still be constructed outside the scope of the contract that has been currently signed, as long as there's a commitment from the county and the city to do just that. It's that simple. It can be done. We talked about that today, and our city engineer would agree with that. It's just a matter of getting it done. We have to cut through the bureaucracy, the red tape with this, and just get it done.
Okay. We can do it outside the scope. Of course, you can't sign it, then.
And that's the way it should be.
So let's get to that, then, all right? Why can't we do that? We can proceed with Dan's Excavating, the Infra Grant, the project, right? Maybe what I was hearing earlier is, well, we don't know where the sidewalk's going to be until we can figure out where the utilities are going to be. And we're not going to know where the utilities are going to be until 2023. Can you explain that? Why don't we know where the utilities are going to be?
Because we're currently directing almost nine miles of utility relocation throughout the corridor, and the way the utility agreements are structured is that they are relocating one year in advance of the construction of the following segment. So they'll be relocating, because utility companies don't have the funding available to relocate all of the utilities from the corridor at one time. So they're relocating it segmentally, following the kind of the design builder's schedule.
So when HNTB says that they're going to, you're going to design the sidewalk, what does that mean exactly?
We would have to locate the right-of-way or the line necessary to fit the sidewalk at a five-foot width. Then we'd have to procure any additional right-of-way necessary to complete that sidewalk, because currently, there's a large portion of the sidewalk that would be constructed outside of the existing right-of-way. So we'd have to get agreements from property owners for sidewalk easements in addition to consent to grades.
So what's stopping us from having parallel tracks, right? Like, two completely different projects going on at the same time? Why can't the city of Sterling Heights contract with the county of Macomb to work on this, like Mr. Vanderpool said, and then as Dan's is doing their work, have you guys right behind designing it, and then our contractor, whoever we pick, to do the sidewalk, doing the sidewalk? It can be Dan's for all I care. I mean, if it's a different contract, it's a different contract. And I want to make sure I'm clear about this. Personally, I don't know where my colleagues stand on this. I want to see 14 to 18. Okay? I understand 18 to 19 presents a challenge that maybe we can't, we got to pump the brakes on a little bit. But 14 to 18, and then 19 to halt, I don't understand why we can't proceed in this way. Mr. Rhea?
Mayor Taylor, we actually discussed that quite candidly with Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Bishaw today with regards of how we could ultimately facilitate concurrent tracks. The issue was the integration of the work and how that could be scaled in while we were phasing in the construction under the design-build parameters. In no way, shape, or form do we want to run afoul with regards to the work that needs to be done under the contingencies of the Infra Grant. So the objective would be is to use all the expertise that is gathered. Once we have all the detailed elements with regards to where the utility is placed, where the ASBILs are placed, we could use the expertise of HNTB to do that design concurrently and as other work is being phased out and closed out. The issues that we still need to reconcile are, can that work be done as we are currently existing in the right-of-way under an Infra Grant under agreement of an existing project, and how that could be scaled in with other contractors? I cannot give you definitive elements on that, as it integrates not only federal regulation and oversight, but also contracting through MDOT. That is something that we discussed, that we were going to explore to figure out how this could be expedited.
Again, I also, like my colleagues who have spoke before, do not have an engineering background. But it seems to me to be, it makes just common sense, that it can't be that hard. It's like, if I've got a contract with a builder to build my house, okay? And the contract is signed, and then we decide we want to make it handicap accessible, contractor doesn't come back and say, "Well, sorry, I can't do that. We're just going to have to build the house." And then once the house is built, then we'll come back and make it handicap accessible, because we already have it sequenced, that we're going to be putting this there and that there. It's like, well, just do the work simultaneously. I don't understand, and I'm not hearing a good explanation, why it can't just be sequenced that way. Once you know between 14 and 15 where the utilities are going to go, how much lead time do you need to say, "Let's design, let's work on getting the rights of way, and let's put in the darn sidewalk"? So I would like, I would like another two-week pause to see if we can, we can get that done. Mrs. Zarco?
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I guess why weren't we notified about the changes sooner than what we were? Why is it that when it came time to actually write the check is when we were notified of the changes?
We've been transparent from the beginning. We met in December of 2019 to discuss the sidewalks and the non-motorized plan for the project. I believe the city was involved with that meeting. Mr. Bishaw was there as well. And that is when we notified them that we were considering just sidewalk on the west side at a wider width to provide access for bicycles as well. We also, in February of 2020, at our public engagement meeting, our public open house for the project, at that time showed the non-motorized path, west side, and no sidewalk connectivity on the east side. So we've been forward with this from the beginning.
Okay. Then, I have to say, I was at that meeting, and I don't ever remember the elimination of the sidewalk on the east side of the street, and I was at that meeting. So my other thoughts are, and I have to agree, we have to, we have to get the project going. Don't misunderstand me, and I want to do that. Like I said, I want to concentrate on what we can do instead of what we can't do. However, if this were approved tonight, could we withhold the funding until we got something in writing? In other words, do we write the check tomorrow, and they get it tomorrow? Or do we just hold on to the check until we get something in writing? And if it's 10 days from now that we finally get something in writing, then we'll give you the money? Is that something we can or allowed to do?
Mr. Koshubski?
That's a great question. I don't know when they'd be sending bills, but once you've committed to this agreement, you've committed to this agreement, so I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Koshubski. And then, Mr. Rhea, do you by any chance know how many, how much funding that the county got with the American Rescue Funds?
With the American Rescue Plan, the county is going to receive just over $169 million.
Gee, and we're going to get just under 20 million?
18.6.
You think we could work something out that we could do, get the money from those funds, because we would want to use them for a one-time project? Well, and we certainly want to leverage and amplify those funds to our advantage.
Councilwoman Zarco, we very much are examining every single element of leveraging the American Rescue Funds and the implications that they could have on infrastructure priorities around the county. The other bill that we're also tracking and are trying to get prioritization on is the American Jobs and Infrastructure Plan, in which we have itemized the prioritization of Innovate Mound. We also have $22 million in requests currently, right now, through the federal appropriations process that will be unilaterally attributed to this project to help with the $40 million funding gap for the Innovate Mound project. So we're exploring all those avenues and the ability to leverage them for the project.
So then we could, you know, do halves from those funds, from the county funds, from the city funds. We could do something. We could come to agreement, couldn't we?
If, under the American Rescue Plan, infrastructure would be an eligible expense, there are some stipulations in there with regards to limiting the ability to put those dollars into road projects versus utility projects, because they're in the process of reconciling the federal infrastructure and jobs plan. So there'll be two pools of funding that very much we want to prioritize. Mound road, we just need to figure out what bucket we can pull those resources from and prioritize them.
But it's an, there's a chance.
There's an opportunity to leverage those dollars.
Yes, there is an opportunity in the future to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then we would have the funding for this.
If it is an eligible expense under those bills, yes, we would prioritize that.
And then, if we're not, if we're postponing this again, in the next two weeks, I'd like to know if this is an eligible expense from those funds? Because we're looking for things that are going to be one-time expenses, because we can't depend on this money. We all know it's like winning the lottery. We want to use it the best way we can. And if we can do that to shore up this project, then why not? Nothing further.
Anyone else on a second round?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, I completely agree with Mrs. Zarco. I attended that meeting in February. Nowhere in that meeting did they ever say to us they weren't going to put sidewalk on the east side of mound road, because I know I would have screamed at that point if this was happening to us. I only just became aware of this recently, that we weren't going to get the sidewalk. It's been my contention, I will look at my colleagues here, that it was always going to be sidewalk on both sides of mound road. Only recently did we become aware that that was not going to happen. So with that being said, I move to postpone this item to the August 4th city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. Mrs. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Koski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. We're postponed to the August 4th meeting. John Paul, Mr. Griffith, I do want to thank you for being here. You answered all of our questions. You're not trying to hide anything. You're very candid, and appreciate that. These were not easy questions, and obviously, this is an important issue to us, and I hope that the discussion tonight reflected that, and, you know, our residents here feel the same way. So we hope we can get something done in these next 15 days, okay?
Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your being here. Okay. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Youth Advisory Board. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have 20 openings, or 20 vacancies. This is a city council appointment. There are 18 members of the Youth Advisory Board who are seeking a reappointment. We can take all of them, if there's not any objection, we can take all of them at once. Do we, do we need to, should we list each one individually? I think probably we have to, right? Is there anyone who wants to make the motion to reappoint these 18 young men and women? Mr. Radke?
I'll give it a shot. Resolve to appoint Miriam Abu Taleb, Ayaan Amir, Fadi Arabo, Serena Bedewad, Maria Bughnar, Fiona Chen, Mutasim Chaudary, Cassidy Conley, Dudi Dada, Allison Habba, Andre Konja, Martina Polath, Ashley Popko, Grace Simon, Max Stafonsky, Daya Tali, Peter Watham, and Zeon Williams, who we, to the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointees, meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
I just want to thank all these candidates for, I believe, reapplying to our Youth Advisory Board.
I just want to thank all these candidates for, I believe, reapplying to our Youth Advisory Board. I met with them earlier this year. This is a tremendous group who are going to be future leaders of our city. I want to thank them for giving up their teens, for giving up their time to the city. I don't know if I would have joined this when I was a kid. So, thank you so much for your hard work. We really appreciate you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Zarko.
Just a reminder that we still have two more openings on that board, so if anybody's interested, please take the time to apply.
Just- Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you. And just listening to the names and seeing the names, we have such a wonderfully diverse community. And I love to see these young people being willing and able and wanting to spend time, getting to be involved with the city. It's, it's, and it just warms my heart, and I'm so, so thankful. So, I'm happy to have them, and I'm excited for them. And that's all. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The two remaining, should we postpone those? Mr. Kachubski? All right. I would entertain a motion to postpone those to the, why don't we call it the August 17th meeting?
Still moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move on from that portion. All right, who wants to be first?
I don't know, Mike. I think you missed it.
Yeah, missed your opportunity.
That was pretty good.
Yeah, I was trying to, I'll let the other citizen go first. All right. I promise I won't mention sidewalks, but a point came up in that discussion where I thought I heard representative of the county say that they actually signed a contract without having hard money from Sterling Heights in hand. And if they did that, if that is what I heard right, that he actually signed a contract without having the $52 million hard money in hand, he got the puck way off sides, had his neck stuck out a mile, and he did a very bad thing. I did work like this at GM, and purchasing and accounting had me thoroughly handcuffed that I sure couldn't sign a contract if I didn't have hard money in hand. And if, if what I heard that guy say was right, he's, he's got himself in a heap of trouble because Sterling Heights hasn't given him the $52 million, and he's promised it to somebody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Who'd like to be next?
We just got our taxes in, and I'd like to know what is miscellaneous. And I want to know why I have to pay for you people to send me the bill. Administration fee. I want to know that. Okay. Now, we're going to that crazy building next to me, that church, the mosque, whatever you call it. Okay, in the paper here, this is back when, when it first came out, even before we even talked, we got this card, special land use. It says for worship only, for church, right? Well, when the meeting was going on and everything, they said we're only going to be there on Fridays or when they have their special holidays. Now, in the paper, and then, plus too, no parking, 100 people. Now, in this paper, this is a while back, I found it, now there's 200 people, and they turned it into a community center. So, what the hell is going on? We don't even know where the lighting's going to be. We don't know if they're going to still put the wall up in the back. Are they going to put a wall up on Koch? That's supposed to be our driveway. What is going on? They just took a tree out, a white pine. It had to be 80 years old, beautiful. They knocked it over in 30 minutes just to put a drain in. And speaking of the drain, they got water going on right now. I took a diet hose, put it in a bucket, five-gallon bucket, one minute and 18 seconds filled that bucket up. That water's been running for almost two weeks. That's just at my side. I don't know on the other side it's running. So, what's going on? They got the, the mounds are there, the hills, and that's, finally, I got ahold of the engineer when he, I said, "What is your job?" He said, "Oh, I do the road with the mud and everything. They're supposed to clean it up." Give me a break. The city truck came by, and you got to get a new driver because he didn't do close to the curb. But now, he's getting a little better. Now, coded person was there. I thought he was going to get me, but it wasn't. It was them. Bushes all over, just because they got a fence up, and that still grow three or four feet tall, weeds, all weeds. You go down the side, you can't even walk down that side. You're talking about sidewalks, big deal. You can't even walk down that sidewalk. There's ruts in it, it's all crushed up, there's litter all over the place. Come on. But I'd still like to know why they're running all this water. You know, in one hour, what, that's 70 gallons? This has been going on for two weeks? Check it out for me, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, sir?
On the sidewalk, I've been doing contracts my whole career in the automotive industry. I quote jobs. I basically have experienced 35 years of doing such things, and some are multimillion-dollar contracts. And it just appears to me, and I just came here for the first time tonight, but if the city engineer's estimate of the sidewalk is less than a million dollars, that's less than half percent of the 217 million. And if they misquoted it or whatever, they're just a contractor. They're our, we're the customer, and we're also, Sterling Heights is paying 2/3 of this full bill. I say they need to just absorb that cost and provide the sidewalk that they said they were going to provide.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Brandy Wright, resident of off of Stratford Drive. I know it's late, I'll try and run through these really quickly. The first thing I wanted to bring up is an issue that's been discussed a lot, particularly because of the election coming up, and that's dispensaries. In 2018, the residents voted to legalize the sale and use of marijuana. At the time, the council opted out because the state hadn't put in any regulations. Councilwoman Kosky stated that until the state puts in regulations, I want to opt out. Councilwoman Smith, we need to find out what rules are put into place. I'm not saying that we're not going to revisit this later. Mayor Protim Saroski, we have nothing from the state. It's our duty to protect the residents until regulations are in place. Councilwoman Zarko, I don't want people sitting in the audience thinking that we won't change it later. We need to wait until the state acts on this. Now, I understand the need for caution at the time, and I appreciate the decisions that were made in order to protect the city and the residents, but things have changed. The state has since put in regulations. A number of cities, Utica, for example, Ann Arbor, they already have dispensaries open, and they are getting tax money from that as we speak. Now, I personally, I don't use marijuana. I really don't care if I have a dispensary next to my house or not. But what I do care about is that the people I elect into office actually follow through with their word. If they say that they're going to revisit something, if they say they're going to do something, actually revisit it. Now, three years ago, many of you gave us your word that this was temporary, that you were going to bring it back up again, and unfortunately, it hasn't been done. Regulations are now in place, and I would like to be able to reelect you, reelect the people that, you know, I voted for years ago, based on the fact that you follow through with your word. So, tonight, I would like one of you who promised to revisit this to go ahead and make a motion, have Mr. Vanderpool prepare a plan to set up a district within the city where the sale of marijuana will be allowed. I understand it's not something that he's going to be able to do by the next meeting, but I do think that this council owes the residents a timeline commitment, and maybe even bring it up before the election, say, the first meeting in October. Secondly, I wanted to ask about the contract we have with Warren regarding the pool usage. It used to be, you could either become a member at Warren Residence Rates or a $5 drop-in fee. With COVID, they stopped allowing Sterling Heights residents to go there. And then, finally, now, we are allowed to go, but they're requiring everyone have a membership for families that's $50 a month. I know a lot of our citizens, they're not able to afford that, especially if they only go a few times a year. I was wondering if the city was going to be renegotiating that contract because of these changes. And finally, I got my water bill last week. It was a little higher than expected, and so, I called and I spoke with Ryan about it, and I just wanted to go ahead and give him some recognition. He spent about 15, 20 minutes on the phone with me, going over everything, letting me know what to look forward to or not look forward to in the future with my bills. And I just wanted to say thank you to him and let everyone know that he was doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anyone else? Communications from citizens?
Hi there, Kelly Skilin. I live on Baghdad. I wanted to talk about the water bills as well. I recently used the water bill calculator to figure out my water bill, and I'm not a high-water user. I rarely use over 30 units a month, usually use between 22 and 24. We are not big water users. We do a lot to conserve water, including collecting green water. However, I was a little surprised because my rate was going down a percentage to find that my overall water bill is going up more than $100 a year because the fee is now being charged every month instead of every three months. And I've had multiple discussions with the budget director about the water bills, and she indicated that the fee was going to go up slightly, which, it's more than $100 a year. That's a little more than slightly, in my opinion, because it's raising my water bill 11% a year, just this year, without any proposed increases in future years. And I'm just curious why it is that when we try to do equity in water billing, the people who use the least amount of water are now paying for all the high-water users because they don't have to pay for sewer charges anymore? Because I'm assuming that's where the difference is, because the city still has to pay the same amount for the water, and you had to make that up somewhere, and it appears that you've made it up by penalizing the people who conserve water. And so, I'm a little curious why that happened and why that was the choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skilin. Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Vanderpool. The young lady's comment before me is well-taken about water rates, but I actually don't want to talk about moving water. I want to talk about water that is not moving tonight. I was in the Upper Peninsula about a month ago now, about 20 days, around the Fourth of July, and I had a wonderful time up there, but they have a lot of bugs, and my husband was torn to pieces by them. He said that is his souvenir from the trip. I think he still has some. When I returned here, the bugs situation is pretty bad, too. I understand we've had some, you know, torrential rains, much more than, I suppose, climate averages over a long period of time, but perhaps not in recent history. Stagnant water is a wonderful breeding ground for insects, mosquitoes in particular, absolutely love it. I live not too far off from James Nelson Park, and in that park, there is a depression where there is one single tree, and in this depression, there is a lake, which, my name after my husband, Lake Stephen, I call it every time it rains, there's a lake there for a period of time. And that lake has been more than perpetual in the past week or two. It's beginning to develop a foam on top. I don't know if the city has looked at this, different depressions in the parks, and perhaps filling them in or doing some grading so that water does not accumulate, instead runs into, in my case, Big Beaver Creek, because then it would at least keep flowing and maybe cut down on the bugs somewhat. And also, for residents at large, I'm not exactly sure how common the knowledge is about stagnant water being a problem with insects. Perhaps if the city could put this out in an email update so that the residents might be more informed, that might be a good thing. I'm not, you know, asking the code enforcement, you know, be more vigilant necessarily about this. I think they are probably vigilant enough already, but residents being educated about it is another story. And the better educated they are, it's less for code enforcement and helps prevent the problem at the source. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthews?
Counsel, Benjamin Orjata, 11076 Mandale. I was curious what the status of the reworking of the Maple Lane Golf Course was, my house and all this property. And I recall there being a city council meeting in, I think, late 2016 or mid 2017, in which there was a discussion of turning that into a senior community with a golf course interspersed throughout it. At the time, beginning of construction was slated, began in 2019. We're in 2021 now, and I was just really curious, like, what had happened with that? I wasn't looking forward to it, of course, at the time, but I figured an update would be in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mrs. Smith?
A lady just requested that the marijuana issue be revisited. And a couple of years ago, when this was discussed, the four women on council did vote no for it. Thank you. And I would just like to suggest, as a citizen, that we put this off because there are more people running for office, and there could possibly be some additional people that will be voting no on that. And I think that side of the coin should be visited, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, and we'll go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Mayor, no, but we will be sure to follow up on the miscellaneous comments tonight once we review them further tomorrow, and we'll get back with the residents either via email or calls. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kachubski?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any new business or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez?
Under new business, as, as you and my colleagues and most of the people in the city know, we have a terrible problem with residential marijuana grow facilities. They are, throughout the city, we've shut down many, still more are popping up. They're causing all kinds of problems, hence our odor ordinance. They're causing blackouts in neighborhoods, they're causing fires. It's, this has been a real problem, and it's been very difficult and very frustrating to resolve this problem, part of which is that people are stealing electricity from DTE, and they're using more electricity than their system can handle. They're certainly using more electricity than the loop that they're on can handle, and causing transformer fires, pole fires, house fires. We're lucky we haven't had any loss of life as, as of right now. I know the city has tried to work very closely with DTE at the corporate level. It's been a very difficult thing to do for a number of reasons, which you'd have to talk to DTE to find out exactly why they're reluctant to help out with this issue. So, I noticed that DTE is asking the Michigan Public Service Commission for a rate increase. And that has been posted, and as protocol, citizens and entities like the City of Sterling Heights can comment on those rate increases. So, without objection, I would like to direct the city administration to submit a comment opposing any rate increase for DTE until we can get cooperation from them with these marijuana grow facilities.
Okay, counsel, any objection to that? Mr. Vanderpool, any additional clarification necessary?
No, Mayor. I think that's pretty clear, but I would like to say that, you know, we do work with DT really daily on a variety of issues, including illegal grow operations, and in many cases, they have been highly cooperative. In other cases, we still have some work to do, but to be fair, I did want to say that there's a lot of collaboration that goes on with DT.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Anything else?
That'll do it, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarko.
One of the residents brought up rain barrels today, and I noticed that we have more and more, as I walk this, you know, through the city, of people that are using rain barrels in order to water their plants. I actually talked to a gentleman that waters his lawn by using rain barrels, the water that he collects, rather than use a sprinkler system. So, I think this would be a great educational program that we should present to our residents as a way to save water, because we always hear about water bills, and especially in the summer, you know, when people are watering their lawns. But if we could do some kind of program where we could teach people how to irrigate- of program where we could teach people how to irrigate their lawn with the rainwater, I think it would be helpful, save some money, and it would be great, because the rainwater is better than, you know, tap water. So, nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Sarko. Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I had, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, one of our residents tonight brought up the Warren Pool. And I know that I've long been advocate of putting a pool right here in Sterling Heights. You've heard it from me before, but I'm curious, our agreement with them, are they allowed to restrict the pool like they've been doing? I know we pay them several hundred thousand dollars a year, I believe, for our residents to have the same access as their residents, so I'm curious how they can unilaterally change their rules for pool use.
Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, it's a good question. We pay the city Warren about $100,000 a year, and I, the reason I did not want to respond to the resident this evening is because I know the Parks and Recreation Director's been addressing this issue with the city of Warren, and is trying to come up with a reasonable way forward, and I'm hopeful that he has a meaningful update that I can share with residents spoke this evening in city council. So if you'll allow me a day or two to do that, I'd be happy to.
No worries. It just shows you why we need a pool in Sterling Heights. So, finally, I totally agree with Mrs. Skilin. It's something I've talked about before. You know, this new watering plan, it's going to penalize the lowest users of water in favor of the heaviest irrigators. I know that my water bill went up, too. So I find it very frustrating, but it is doing exactly what it was supposed to do. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to mention, I had reached out to Mr. Vanderpool this week. My neighborhood's streets are being reconstructed as we speak, and I had the chance to talk to the site supervisor for Delicio Cement or Construction, and, you know, they're doing a fine job. They're going as quickly as possible, weather permitting, and we were just talking about the project in general, and he said that they really enjoy working in Sterling Heights. And I said, "Oh, really?" I said, "Well, you know, what makes us so different than every other community that you do work in?" Because it's a very large company. And he said, "Because Sterling Heights is really the only city that they work in that requires the right specifications to make the jobs work right, last the longest, and are the best investment in our community." So I just wanted to make mention of that. You know, we, in all these neighborhoods that are being redone, everybody needs to have a little patience. You have to, you know, there's neighbors parking, you know, in each other's driveways, and there's, you know, people's garbage being put on other people's lawns. Everybody is just working together to get this project done, and I appreciate the patience. It's one-way traffic. There are signs up in all the, hopefully, in all the neighborhoods that these projects are being done in. Hopefully, people follow the "do not enter" signs. However, I have the "do not enter" sign at the bottom of my driveway and know that there's a lot of people that don't read those signs and follow the directions. You're going to come head-on. It's one-way traffic. There's only one lane open. So I just ask everyone to be patient. We all complain about our city roads, you know, our neighborhood roads, and we've all approved these funds through the Safe Streets Villages to get these done, and they'll get done as quickly as they possibly can, and let's just all have patience and work together as a community that we always do. So, I'm really proud of the city, you know, for having the high, you know, regards in what the specifications that we require, and I'm really proud of the residents and the neighborhoods for working together as well. So, and also, just remind everyone, our next city council meeting is actually on Wednesday because of the election, and we will be over in City Hall. So, it's our first meeting over in City Hall. So, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Koski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. We've had an awful lot of rain, obviously, lately. Have we had the opportunity to check some of our major parks and our smaller neighborhood parks, to see if we have a problem with any standing water where we might need to trench it out to make sure that it evaporates on its own? And do we still do mosquito spraying in the parks?
Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koski, first, your last part of the question, yes, we still do mosquito spraying in the parks. By nature of many of our parks, they are in low-lying areas in some cases, and maybe that's why our founding fathers identified some of them as parks. So yes, we do have ponding and flooding. Dodge Park is a great example. That lower bowl area is in the flood plain and does frequently flood, as does our bike hike trail through the Dodge Park system, and so we do have that problem in our parks. But certainly, we can look at, I took some notes tonight, to see if there's anything unusual going on, as mentioned, and, you know, I can report back accordingly, but most importantly, we do spray for mosquitoes, especially in Dodge Park.
My main concern, of course, was Nelson Park, because that's two sections, one on each side of the road, and I had not heard about any flooding problems there before. So, that one I'm a little concerned about. Thank you.
Mr. Yanez?
Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, I'm requesting at the next city council meeting, the police chief or his designee attend the meeting, give a presentation on the Slow Your Roll program.
No objection?
Without objection?
None.
Thank you.
And if you do have an objection, we don't care.
You're pretty wild tonight.
Well, I'm telling you what. I mean, the speeding is crazy. It's out of control. It's the number-one issue I hear from, and we've got to do something about it. So I want to hear what the chief, I want to hear how he's motivating the troops to get out there and write tickets. And we need to have a zero-tolerance policy on it.
Mr. Mayor, can I also add in the fact that Metropolitan Parkway is a county road, and I don't see any sheriff's deputies' cars helping Sterling Heights?
I've never seen that.
Well, I don't know. Do they have jurisdiction to pull over on county roads? I mean, the only time I see them is when they're blocking traffic to let people in and out of
Freedom Hill.
Freedom Hill. But, you can answer now, I guess.
Mayor, that's, we do have an arrangement that they do handle the Freedom Hill, but elsewhere, they do not have jurisdictional control to write tickets. But I just will say quickly, we share your concern about speeding in the city. There's no question, this is out of hand everywhere. You know, some of the news reports all across the country, but including Michigan, it's just, it's horrendous, the traffic violations that are going on. We have had extensive discussions about a plan moving forward to increase enforcement in the city, and so we're happy to share some of those thoughts and ideas at the next city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Radke, briefly?
Just to follow, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up on that thing, one thing I want to say is, if we need to, we already were going to create this traffic enforcement unit, the stretch of patrol, maybe we got to bring those guys on a little bit earlier to solve some of this speeding problem, because it really is the number-one concern I hear from residents. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay. Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you. So, I do want to, as has been mentioned just once tonight, remind everybody out there that August 3rd is election, primary election out there, and it is a city election. That is the only thing going up for elections, so please remember to vote, and vote for the city council, the councilperson of your choice, and the mayor council, or the mayor person of your choice. And I hope to see as many people out there voting. It is our right as residents and citizens of this country. It's a privilege that we hold very dear, that I hold very dear, and I really encourage everyone to get out there. As somebody who takes this very, very seriously, I hope to see you out there, and I thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Vanderpool, I know Mr. Bayshaw's here, and he's waited patiently, so maybe we'll give him an opportunity to talk. It is after June 30th, and quite, it's almost three weeks after June 30th, when Shana northbound was supposed to open. They were paving, they were putting asphalt down, I know this, when the Fourth of July holiday came, because I remember going up north and thinking, "I wonder if it's going to be ready, going to be open when I get back," and it's not. What is going on, do you know? I mean, it's been three weeks since they started putting asphalt down. Do we have any, we should have probably asked Mr. Ray if he knew, but do we have any better update on when northbound Shana is going to be open?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm glad you're the last one, because I'm out of ink.
You don't have to write it down when I ask. You just have to answer.
So, Shana Road is obviously behind schedule. I want to emphasize again, this is a county road project. We do not have any jurisdictional road over the scope of work out there, or inspections, or the timeline. But I will say this, the south, the northbound lane, according to the latest information we have from the county, which is just about a week old right now, is that by August 1st, beginning of August, I should say, that the northbound lanes will be open. So that means what we've requested from the county is that by the end of this week, they should be able to start providing public notice of such, right? Because motorists will want to start thinking about that and changing their traffic patterns and so on. So the county has not given us a definitive answer on whether or not they're going to do that on Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, but they said they will certainly provide some level of advance notice. So August, beginning of August, the definition of the beginning of August is not definitive, but beginning of August, it will be, northbound lane should be open. Now, in addition, so that puts them behind about a month, right? However, in talking to the contractors firsthand, the city engineer and I go out there periodically to hear firsthand from the field guys, they have said to us that they feel they can make up some of that time and still have the project near completion, which was supposed to be the end of August. Now, that sounds highly unlikely, right? I'm very skeptical that that's going to happen. But, you know, will they be able to complete it mid-September, end of September, perhaps? Keep in mind, they only have one lane to do now, going southbound, so it will go quicker. And they did get a jumpstart on the Plum Brook Bridge, the southbound Plum Brook Bridge. They've already started on the underside of that bridge. They're already taking out curb, so it is, I believe, going to move a little quicker in the second half, but that's the latest update that we have right now.
Okay. You and I have discussed this, for the benefit of the residents, we requested, not me, the city, you and Mr. Bayshaw, requested biweekly meetings with Macomb County Roads Department to get updates on the progress on Shana Road, and that request was denied. Is that correct?
I shouldn't say it's been denied, but they have not been confirmed yet. So, and we've been trying to get them confirmed. So as an alternative, we have been going out on site directly. It is in our city, so we have the right to go out there and ask some questions.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you, and I appreciate that, and we'll see. I mean, we have a council meeting at the beginning of August, so hopefully, we'll know. But, I mean, we do need to know. People's lives are changed pretty dramatically by Shana Road being shut down. And, you know, with schools starting in September, it's going to be a nightmare. It was. I mean, my son was on the bus going from 16 and Dodge Park to my house, and, you know, it was delayed by 15 or 20 minutes sometimes. So, which, you know, doesn't necessarily seem like a lot, but when you got to get to work and you got to do, you know, other things, it's very disruptive. So I hope, I hope they're doing, I hope they can get back on track. Some other announcements, July 27th at Dodge Park, the Sterling Heights Police Department is hosting a Core Family Fun Night, starting at 6:00 PM. We do have Takeout Tuesdays at Dodge Park, which is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, if you're not familiar with that. Just Takeout Tuesdays is food trucks at Dodge Park, so if you didn't know, show up. Those are fun nights. And then, the Core Family Fun Night is, there are a lot of cool events planned for families. There's going to be raffles, snacks, tie dye, police officers. You can meet your corps officer, who is the patrol man or woman for your sector of the city. So any issues happening in your neighborhood, you can tell that officer. And at 9:00 o'clock, there's going to be a movie showing Raya and the Last Dragon. So bring your family, bring your kids, rain or shine, and hopefully we get some good weather, and you have a great night. That's a week from today. As Mrs. Sarowski said, the August 3rd election is just two weeks away, so our August 4th city council meeting will be in the, our August 3rd council meeting will be postponed to August 4th, and it will be in our council chambers. And so it's been since March of 2020. And I want to just take a minute briefly to thank Kyle Langley, our Parks and Recreation Director, and his staff for doing, and just absolutely incredible job with this venue for the last year. We were one of the first and one of the only, I think, major cities in the state of Michigan to go back to in-person meetings as early as we did. And I know some cities and townships didn't go back to in-person meetings until they absolutely had to. I just think, I'm proud that the city was able to provide these meetings. I asked our Parks and Recreation Director tonight about anybody getting sick, any illness tied to these council meetings. He's not aware of a single case or a single incident. So to say that we were able to do this safely, to provide public council meetings, provide public meetings is our main function. Our main role is to be transparent and provide the public with an opportunity to participate in this government. And during the most unprecedented circumstances that any of us have faced in our lifetimes, we were able to provide this service almost completely uninterrupted, so I'm very proud of that. I'm happy that our city council, our city administration was able to make this work. It's a major benefit to the residents of Sterling Heights. And so, as we leave this venue, I can tell you, a lot of other mayors and other council members from throughout the state reached out to me and said, "I thought you said that you guys were in a temporary location." And I said, "We were," and they said, "The production quality was phenomenal." Some of them said, "The production quality in the venue is better than their permanent council chambers and better than what they do." So, a testament, too, to our community relations staff have just been absolutely phenomenal through this entire process, and kudos to you guys. You're unsung heroes, and you produce these things. Get them out, get them online, so that the people who can't come to our council meetings, or who didn't want to leave their house, were able to watch them. It was just a phenomenal job by everybody, and you all ought to be proud of the work that you did. You know what? That's all I'm going to say tonight. I appreciate everybody who did participate in this meeting, and, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, supported.
They're moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.